Suicide. They demanded accountability. And the Democratic Party of Louisiana is now calling for a new law against fabricating evidence. They call it Lacy Law. Darius Lannis heads the Louisiana Democratic Party.
Our heart always goes out to the Lacy family. You know, this is not about politics, but it is about righting wrongs. It is about fixing situations so that people inside of our state know that we're fighting on their behalf at all times.
Louisiana's Republican Attorney General said in a statement that the new evidence Lacy's lawyer put forth does not absolve him in responsibility in the accident. However, she says she is reviewing how the state police conducted its investigation and will release her findings, but it's not clear when. For NPR News, I'm Mel Bridges in Baton Rouge.
If you or someone you know may be considering suicide or is in crisis, call or text 988 to reach the Suicide and Crisis Lifeline.
Time now for My Unsung Hero, our series from the team at the Hidden Brain Podcast. My unsung hero tells the stories of people whose kindness left a lasting impression on someone else. Today's story comes from Levon Shafzma. Recently, she was in downtown Chicago, visiting from Michigan. She spent a few hours in Millennium Park people watching. On the way back to her car, she realized her purse was missing. It held her ID, credit cards, medications, and car keys. Shafzma began to retrace her steps. Eventually, she made her way to a gift shop.
So I went into the gift shop and I went up to the cashier and I said, by any chance, has anyone turned in a black purse? Her eyes got really big and she said, wait a minute, is that yours? And at that moment, all of the tears and sobs came out. All of my anxiety came out and she said, wow, do I have a story for you? She said two women had come into the gift store with a black purse. They had seen it on a park bench, but as they were walking over, they noticed a man looking inside of it and they immediately grew suspicious. And so they walked up to the purse and the man and said, sir, is this yours? And he mumbled something like, yeah, yeah, my wife lost it. I was looking for it. And they just didn't believe him. And so they actually pretended that it was theirs and they wrestled it out of his hands and walked quickly to where they saw a security guard near the gift shop and then walked inside. And they waited and waited and waited to see if the owner might return and then they left. Five minutes later, I walked in asking for the purse. These women, who I don't know, saved me hours and hours of work canceling credit cards. They rescued me from massive anxiety and I never got to thank them. I never got to thank them for their courage and noticing something was off and intervening on behalf of a stranger who wasn't even present. I ask myself often, would I have done the same thing? Would I have done that for a stranger? What act of kindness am I willing to do on behalf of someone I don't know? So if they happen to hear this story, I just want to say thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Levon Shafzma lives in Grand Rapids, Michigan. You can find more stories of unsung heroes and learn how to submit your own at hiddenbrain.org. Support for My Unsung Hero comes from Viking, dedicated to creating travel experiences for the thinking person, with programs designed for cultural enrichment onboard and onshore. Learn more at viking.com.
Welcome to our evening meeting for November 18th. The board held its regular afternoon session at 2:00 PM today, followed by closed session. We move to item J, certification resolution. And the closed session just concluded. Nothing was discussed, except the matter which was identified in the motion to convene in closed session. Only those matters lawfully permitted to be discussed under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed. Is there a motion to adopt the certification resolution?
Motion to adopt.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes. We move to item K, public hearing and adoption of resolutions. Item one, resolution adopting an amendment to the Roanoke County 200 Plan to incorporate the West Roanoke River Greenway feasibility study into the Roanoke County 200 Plan. Isaac Henry, Principal Planner, welcome.
Hello. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm just going to give you all a quick rundown of this West Roanoke River Greenway feasibility study that y'all are considering for adoption tonight. So the West Roanoke River Greenway feasibility study, it looks at that far western section, the potential Roanoke River Greenway between Green Hill Park and Montgomery County. That it's about a nine mile stretch of the Roanoke River that's shown in blue there and outlined in the red dotted line. So this is just a closer aerial map of the study area we looked at. It's essentially the Roanoke River corridor between Green Hill Park and Montgomery County and the Route 11460 West Main Street corridor between Green Hill Park and Montgomery County and everything in between. So been working on the study for a while, about three and a half years now. We first applied for technical assistance with National Park Service back in early 2022 and were awarded that technical assistance. So we had somebody from National Park Service helping us out for the first couple of years of the study. We kicked off the study in summer 22 and the goal is to develop multiple potentially feasible routes for the Roanoke River Greenway between Green Hill Park and Montgomery County. It's just a first step of, you know, examining potential routes for that section at a very high level. So we had two rounds of public outreach. We had two community meetings in the fall of 2022 and two community meetings in the summer of 2023. In total, we had almost 200 community meeting attendees and almost 300 survey responses. In summer 2023, we presented 20 potential route segments and these are just conceptual. These are not like definite places on the ground. It's basically just a corridor, a general kind of path to the public. And of those 20 conceptual route alternatives, again, they're split into small segments. We have 15 of them included in the draft study as potentially viable. Pretty soft language because it's going to be a really challenging section to build a greenway on. So Steering Committee, we had myself and Megan Croniz and Lindsay Webb from Roanoke County. We had Nathan Hilbert from National Park Service, Amanda McGee from the Regional Commission, Michael Gray and Carol Moneymaker from VDOT and Frank McGuire, who's our former Greenway Coordinator with the Roanoke Valley Greenway Commission. For stakeholder outreach, we met with the Western Virginia Regional Jail, the current jail leadership, the superintendent and deputy superintendent, met with the Water Authority, the Virginia Passenger Rail Authority, because at the time, a couple of years ago, they owned one of the two railroad tracks going through the study area. It's since been sold back to Norfolk Southern. Montgomery County, of course, because, you know, ideally in the future, we'd like this to comprise part of the Valley to Valley Trail, so we need to meet Montgomery County's project at the county line. So we need to coordinate on that. Appalachian Power and the Roanoke Valley Chapter of Trout Unlimited, which is Trout Fishing Fisherman's Group. So yeah, more constraints than opportunities in this corridor. Big constraint is the terrain. It's very challenging, very steep terrain, not a lot of flat ground in there. Land ownership, there are something like 800 different parcels in the study area and about like 500 different owners. So right of way for this would be very, very challenging. There are a lot of small parcels, lots of different owners, lots of primary dwellings, like people's, you know, primary residence where they live. So it's a different situation than in the city where, you know, you had all this utility-owned land that was graded and flat along the river. Narrow roads, most of the roads through the study area are narrow, so you wouldn't be able to just kind of paint part of the greenway on the road because there's barely enough room for two cars to pass, as it is. Lots of places where I would have to cross the river potentially, lots of places where potentially I have to cross the railroad tracks, which that brings a lot more permitting. And then, of course, Route 11460 West Main Street is, you know, obviously a physical barrier of sorts. But that also presents an opportunity because we do have sidewalk going, you know, all the way from downtown Salem to Technology Drive on West Main Street. So if we could connect to that, then you potentially have a bike path connection to the Roanoke River Greenway all the way into downtown Salem and just, you know, opens up, you know, potentially more foot traffic for all the businesses on West Main Street. So for the conceptual route alternatives, again, we split them into small segments of about half a mile to two miles, just to make it, you know, more digestible. And again, if the, you know, project is constructed, it would be have to be constructed in small segments, as we know from our current greenway projects. So we split it into three sub areas. This is the farthest west sub area, all the way over by Montgomery County. Of these routes, we are proposing, we have four of the five, all except for segment number three in the draft study as potentially viable segments. Segment three we eliminated because the railroad right of way is no longer owned by Virginia Passenger Rail Authority. It's now by Norfolk Southern again, so it's not going to happen. So Sub Area B, this is the middle section. Of all these segments shown, we're including, or we have all but six, 10, and 13 included in the draft study as potentially viable. And then this is the easternmost sub area over by Green Hill Park. And of these five segments, we have all but segment 16 included in the draft study as potentially viable. So we did want to call out some areas as priorities going forward or potential priorities. These are the areas where it seems most realistic to potentially construct a greenway sometime in, you know, the foreseeable future, not, you know, super fast, but. So these are basically the three that, segments that we would then, you know, want to keep looking at, try to, you know, maybe get some design funding for if y'all decide it's a priority. But these are the three where you have simpler land ownership patterns, simpler topography, and potentially a more positive user experience. So Segment 20 over by Green Hill Park, Segment 8, it's on the jail property. And then Segment 2, it's along the river over by Peaceful Drive. And that, most of that Segment 2 is owned by AEP, so it's utility owned, so that potentially presents an opportunity. So we had a planning commission public hearing on November 3rd. There were six citizens who spoke at the public hearing. They had a number of concerns generally related to their personal property and the proximity of some of these potential routes to their property. And, you know, a lot of people just basically said they, you know, are concerned with, or they don't necessarily want a greenway on their property. We also received two emails in advance of the public hearing, the planning commission public hearing. One was basically saying he didn't want the greenway near his property and the other encouraged us to leave on as many route alternatives as possible, cast as wide a net as possible. We also discussed, you know, the process for developing the draft study over the past three years, just the idea that this is an initial planning study, just a first step, very high level. It's just meant to get the process started. It's not meant to say, you know, these are definitely projects that we're definitely pursuing. It's just taking a very first look at that far western segment. And that further analysis and evaluation would be needed to determine the actual location of any potential future greenway. We haven't gone out there and actually, you know, tracked, looked at like what side of the road it could be on, you know? We just sort of looked at corridors and all the issues that would go into constructing a greenway through those corridors. That we discussed, the county to date has not used eminent domain on any greenway projects because there was some concern about that. And the fact that construction of any of these greenway segments would likely be many years in the future. And it would be, the priorities are the segments between Green Hill Park and Explore Park. And this is sort of bonus, you know? So the planning commission did recommend approval of the comprehensive plan amendment to incorporate the West Roanoke River Greenway feasibility study into the Roanoke County 200 Plan. Any questions?
Yeah, okay. Any questions for Mr. Henry?
Yes. So this is in the Catawba District and I have heard from several people and I think that your summary was very good, very nice summary, Isaac, and appreciate your good work on the community meetings and dealing with the public and some of the concerns and questions that have been raised to date. One of the terms that you used, or I heard you use a phrase of really challenging, and then I saw your list of constraints. What beyond that list of constraints, just from the top of your mind, do you think it makes this project going forward challenging?
Aside from the list of constraints, I would say generally the escalation in costs of transportation projects and materials, as we know, they've gotten a lot more expensive since the pandemic. Building any stretch of greenway is now extremely expensive, even if the topography is relatively flat and it's a short section. So just the cost, I mean, just the cost itself would force us to break it up into small segments, but then you add, you know, how challenging the specific area is and we know that it would likely be very, very costly. Secondly, oh, I kind of touched on this with land ownership, but right of way, you know, a lot of the property owners through there are not, you know, necessarily jumping up to give the county right of way for greenways are not necessarily the ones who are most excited about this project. You know, there are many who are in the study area, but I would say that right of way is going to be a challenge. It's going to be a challenge to try to, you know, get people to sell us strips of land for this greenway.
And how many times have we ever used eminent domain in constructing a greenway?
So far, the county has not used eminent domain at all in constructing a greenway.
And when you were referring to the escalating cost of greenway, I've even seen where it has been compared to the cost of a mile of interstate historically is now pretty much what it costs for a greenway. And so the costs have just really gotten exorbitant and very difficult to find the funding for those things. So just for perspective, when we were looking at the West River Greenway that was just opened and how long that took us from the beginning stages to really having the ribbon cutting a couple of weeks ago, how many years do you know off the top of your head?
It was, off the top of my head, I don't know. I want to say like 20, 25.
And so when, so that was a big day for opening that up and we, you know, that was in a fairly busy, especially comparatively speaking, to what we're looking at projecting for this area. This was a fairly busy street, a fairly busy right of way area. So when we talk about going any further west into the county, that whole area is like a green preserve. And so to that point, people being less than enthusiastic about a paved section coming through their green preserve, they might be a little reluctant for. While the initial concept of wanting to complete our greenways and extend them to other communities, I think is valued, no one should feel like this is imminent or going to happen anytime soon.
Correct. Absolutely.
And that's all I have for right now.
Okay. Mr. North?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Service Transportation Board funding, the transportation budget for the next five years is being worked on now in Washington when they're not on strike or shut down. We don't know what that's going to look like for many projects.
Correct.
And that's a big source of funding for projects. We know from the last round of Smart Scale, it was cut from 1.6 billion down to a billion dollars and only 56 projects, I think it was, were funded, which was one third of what was funded back in round five. And in VACO's Conference on Transportation, the Vice Chair of the Transportation Committee told us, told all the counties that were there that had concerns that if we want more revenue, we're going to have to raise it ourselves. And I don't imagine we're going to tax people that walk the greenways, nor are we going to set up a toll booth on any roads around here. So I don't imagine that's ever going to get off the ground and would be something that I wouldn't support. So not to make things dismal, it's just a reality check. Expensive projects sometimes fail the metrics of Smart Scale. And funding, we learned that on Peters Creek Road. We were told to put the whole thing in, then was told it was too big to come with smaller projects like they do in Richmond, which averaged about 26 million. So I won't be around when this greenway is completed. And I don't imagine many people on this board and who are in this room, for that matter, will be. But it's not to say we can't have it in our plans to work on it over time. Maybe some miracle will happen and the money will fall out of the sky, but, you know, the costs are just going up for everything. And it's a challenge. But I do want to comment on your presentation, it was very thorough, very succinct and to the point, you did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. North. Thank you.
Mr. Mahoney?
Mr. Henry, could you go to slide 12? This is the slide that identifies three segments, 2, 8, and 20, to be studied in greater detail. Was there, was there any significant discussion at the planning commission level about if we could build it, if we did get money, to build chunks of greenway, at least with respect to Segment 2 and Segment 8, that don't connect to anything else? Was there, was there any substantial discussion at the planning commission level for that?
Yeah, a little bit. So the challenges of this, of this section mean that if we do want to potentially construct a greenway, although it's in Montgomery County, we're kind of going to have to construct the bits that we can when we can. So we did discuss the idea of, you know, potentially having segments that are not connected to each other for a while. But, you know, our thinking there is that there aren't currently any greenways in the far western part of the county. There's not, you know, a lot of, you know, set aside places to walk. Obviously, there are trails in the woods like that and there's sidewalk on West Main Street, but it would be a little more, you know, enjoyable than the West Main Street sidewalk and safer than walking on a road. So it, you know, could just be a standalone greenway in that part of the county, a little place for people to go walk for, you know, a long time until, you know, it becomes part of the greater Roanoke River Greenway.
It would seem that it would almost be easier, if we could get funding, to build those segments, even though they may not, at least Segment 2 and 8 may not interconnect, but at least those are segments that, like they're by the regional jail, they're by the Wayside Park. You could probably do those fairly quickly and I hope not with a whole lot of money. At least Segment 20 does interconnect with Green Hill and it would interconnect with
That would be my priority.
The longer one that we already have, hopefully with Salem. I know it, I know there could be some criticism that we're building segments that don't connect with one another, but at the very least, this is something that we could show some progress and they would be hopefully the easier ones to do as compared to some of the other more challenging ones. I kind of like that idea, at least to pursue that in greater detail and see if we could get some progress going forward there. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Henry, I have a couple of questions for you. So the Greenway feasibility study was well done. I enjoyed reading that and it looks like the committee put in a lot of work through that document. And I think it's well to attach it to the Roanoke County 200 Plan. So once we've developed all this study and feasibility, what's happening on the other side of Montgomery County? What are they doing, if anything?
So their Regional Commission, the New River Valley Regional Commission recently launched a Valley to Valley Trail study. So they're looking, well, it's sort of like, it's their equivalent of ARVARC, so it's not Montgomery County, it's the regional entity. It's undertaking a similar study to this to basically look at, at a very high level, again, the routes on the Montgomery County side. And VDOT has adopted a study which is, you know, very sort of initial and high level and it's very, you know, kind of basic and just looking at, you know, a few corridors, usually long roads. So it's basically trying to build off the VDOT study and try to, you know, get a little more detail as far as the different alternatives. But they're, they're in sort of the same phase that we're in, where they're looking at, you know, a conceptual study to just look at potentially where it could go. But my sense is that that does indicate that it has, you know, become somewhat of a priority for the New River Valley.
So, you know, we have greenways, a good section have been done from, from our, from Explore Park to Green Hill. Does Montgomery have anything at this point?
Yeah, well, they have the Huckleberry Trail. So that is, you know, the Valley to Valley Trail, the goal of the Valley Valley Trail would be to connect the Roanoke River Greenway to the Huckleberry Trail. And then there's also the New River Trail, which, you know, is a little farther away, but is a very long.
I'm thinking a little closer. I know about the Huckleberry Trail, but anything closer to
The eastern side.
The eastern side of Montgomery County. They have anything? Is it just?
Anything in Ellison or Lafayette?
Yeah.
They've got like parks in Ellison Lafayette. I don't know if they have, I know that they, there's been some talk about constructing a greenway or a walking trail there.
Okay. Well, the point I'm trying to make is, Mr. Mahoney talked about, basically, we're building greenways to nowhere and if we do that one section, what's our neighbor doing? So, because we want to have, we want to have them tie in. The Section 20 makes sense because it extends right off of, what's it, Green Hill. So, okay, anyway, that's my comments. I appreciate it. Good report.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. We appreciate all who have come to address the board today. When your name is called, please come forward, state your name and address prior to sharing your comments. Each purchase, person is permitted to speak up to three minutes. We have, at the front of the podium, we have a light system that tells you how much system that tells you how much time you have remaining. When the light changes from green to yellow, please share any concluding remarks. When the light changes from yellow to red, you're done. While the board desires to hear from all who desire, we ask that speakers try not to repeat their comments. So at this time, I have, I have one signed up, two, okay. First one I have is Barry Trent.
Good evening, Chairman Radford, members of the board. Thank you for an opportunity to speak. My name is Barry Trent. I live at 602 Maplewood Drive in Vinton, Virginia. I have the privilege of serving as the Citizen Rep for Roanoke County on the Roanoke Valley Greenway Commission, and I'm currently serving as Chair of that commission. In addition to that, I have an opportunity to work with the midweek crew from Pathfinder. So I have some investment, some sweat equity into the greenway system as well. But as a lifelong resident of Roanoke County, I want to express my appreciation for the vision and the work that the county has already invested in planning and development of these greenways, really from the very inception 30 years ago. I think the first greenway in the valley was in Roanoke County. The ribbon cutting earlier this month for the new west Roanoke River section is a great example of the commitment that our county has made to a regional effort. I also think we, we need to thank and applaud Isaac Henry and the Planning Department for the thoroughness and the transparency. They've take, they've done really in the development of this plan and for the quality of the product that they've turned out. I know that was a tremendous amount of work. The 2018 Greenway Plan that was adopted by the five-member localities of the Greenway Commission includes this segment of the greenway as a potential extension for Roanoke River Greenway all the way to Montgomery County. And as already been mentioned, the New River Regional Commission is currently doing a study coming the other way from west to east, along with the VDOT's Valley-to-Valley Trail Study. And so I think these are great examples of a much larger regional effort to tie these greenways together. In the current Roanoke County 200 Plan, the completion of the Roanoke River Greenway between Montgomery County and Franklin County was been, has been identified as a countywide transportation priority. I think the adoption of this study into that plan would be a very positive statement of Roanoke County's ongoing support and commitment to the greenway network and the economic development and the overall quality of life for this region. I hope that I can still be using greenways in 2038, and I look forward to seeing how these plans come to fruition, really for the benefit of future generations. Again, I want to thank you for your insight and your forward thinking. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker I have signed up is Melinda Cloud, Crowd.
Close.
You can straighten it out when you get up here. You're, couldn't quite read your printing.
I'm Dr. Melanie Crowe, and I'm a resident of 4763 West River Road. I just know that the greenway is a great thing. I've been on the board in Roanoke City when I lived there of Parks and Rec. So I know how important these types of things are to communities, to mental health, and all of those things. So I'm for greenways. Just like a lot of people in my neighborhood, I'm not for a greenway exactly in my front yard. And that's kind of what we're talking about, is this thing being seven feet from my window by the time we add a 10-foot thing. So that's not super exciting to me. And then the other end would be if it's along the river itself. Now it's in my backyard. I can't put a fence up to protect my pets because the river floods, which is another factor as far as maintenance goes. Maintaining greenways, as many of you may or may not know, can be quite expensive once we build them. They can range from $700 a mile to $7,000 a mile, but averaging, you know, somewhere around $1,500 a mile maintenance. So that's something to consider on an annual basis. And, and that's not something that should be taken too lightly because when we're dealing with flooding, that's going to cause your costs to go up because lots of crazy stuff happens when that happens with the flooding. But I just want to make it known, I think the greenway is great. I personally think that these sections might be better off running down Main Street for lots of different reasons. Businesses being involved would be one. A lot of people cycle through that area already, so it might be safer. Not that long ago, I saw a group from Roanoke County, the cycling team, there was an accident there, kind of near the Glenver Market. I don't know what happened. I don't know if someone got hit, but a cyclist was down in the highway. So that was kind of scary. So I think if we had a safer path, that may be nice. And running along Main Street could be helpful because that might then encourage small businesses to put up, you know, little restaurants and little stores and things where people might stop, maybe a bike shop, something along that way. So that's all I have to say about it. Thank you guys very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have any more speakers, Madam Clerk? Okay. In hearing none, I am going to close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would like to make some commentary, and if I could, I'd like to make the commentary and then make a motion if I could, please. So I just want to reiterate to all who are interested that this is an initial acceptance of a study for our, to add to our comprehensive plan. There is no funding available at this time or really truly even on the horizon. My personal priority is to complete the greenway to get it to Green Hill Park. I think that is very important. And then to go to the eastern side of the county and get over to where Mr. Trent is and make sure that that connection to Explorer Park is completed. And then, if we're all still alive, maybe the greenway section near the regional jail, I believe that was segment 20 to Mr. Mahoney's point earlier. And that one connects to Green Hill Park and to me makes the most sense. Dr. Melanie, I appreciate what you were saying, and it's what I was trying to say earlier, that for a lot of these people, their basic living condition is their, is their respite and their area for what others of us may think of as a greenway. You know, it's the way that they live in a rural, green area. And so I, I know that it's important for us to plan and that someday this could very well come to fruition. I don't want anyone to feel threatened by it at this point in time because there are no specific plans going forward and more importantly, no specific funds on the horizon for it. It's just saying that one day we'd like to have some connectivity and this area tends to make the most sense. Will it end up on the sidewalk? You know, I, there's a lot of controversy about that too, but the main thing is, is that we're looking forward towards connectivity with other communities. I want citizens to know that I hear the concerns and from the rural areas of western Roanoke County, you were intentional with where you decided to live or where your family has had generational land. And, and it's your decision to live in a less populated, unbothered area. And I, I hear you and I respect that. We understand your concerns with this. But with that being said, this is really just the acceptance of the study. We're studying this process. Green, greenways have just been enormously popular, very well-used. Mr. Trent, I think you'll be using it for a long, probably one of the longest term. People in this room, I see you using it for a long time still. And, and it's a good thing. So with that being said, I would like to make a favorable motion for this resolution.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, in seeing none, yeah?
The only thing that I want to say is, to be honest with you, we have just done the, started working with the study and everything for the east county. And I am hoping to see that come through sometime before 2038 so that Barry Trent can be running on it and doing whatever it is he does all these years. I've seen him on them. And I think the greenways are a great asset to have in the county.
They are.
So with that being said, again, bring the study.
Okay, very good. Clerk, please call the role.
Mrs. Hooker.
Yes.
Mr. North.
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney.
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Radford.
Yes. Okay, it is adopted into the Roanoke County 200 Plan. We move to item L, second reading ordinance and public hearing. Item 1, the petition of T. P. B. Enterprises LLC to rezon approximately 9.355 acres of land zoned C2CS, high-intensity commercial district with conditions and special conditions use permit to R-4C, high-density multifamily residential district with conditions to construct multifamily dwelling units located at 5050 Keighley Road, Windsor Hills District. Phil Thompson, welcome.
It's a mouthful, isn't it?
It is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. What this project is, is trying to put, build multifamily dwellings, apartments at Keighley, behind Keighley Village. That's what this project is. I think everyone's familiar where Keighley Village is located, 419 and Keighley Road in Windsor Hills District, across from Metis Platas, Metis Plaza. So address is 5050 Keighley Road. The parcel's a little 14.617 acres. The proposal is to subdivide that property, 9.355 acres, are being, are proposed to be rezoned to R4C and the 5.262 acres would remain C2CS, which is the existing commercial development that's out there. Again, the petition is for a multifamily dwelling unit development. As far as community outreach, we sent out 278 letters to adjoining property owners. We did have a community meeting that was held on Wednesday, October 22nd, at the Brownwood Center, had roughly about 40 citizens in attendance. Representatives of the applicant, planning staff, VDOT were all there as well. In your packet, I think there are comment forms that were filled out at that meeting regarding their concerns. There was also emails that were sent in that are also included in your packet on various concerns that they had regarding the project, and I'll go over those in a little bit. Couple photos, this is the far entrance closest to the towns of Hidden Valley. Again, this is a view looking back up at that entrance. But again, the property is fairly flat, it's been graded for some time. There is a stormwater, stormwater pond as part of this. They will grade that out and all the stormwater utilities will be underground. Again, looking at the property to the left is where the proposed apartment buildings are proposed to be located. Again, parking lot. Concept plan, what they're showing is five buildings on the property. Four are apartment buildings. They'll be four stories tall, 56 units per building. Gets you 224, so 224 total units. There's a fifth building, which is their recreational building for the project. Again, some renderings are also included in the application and also in your packet of what the buildings from an architectural standpoint would look like. And then there's the clubhouse rendering as well. District zoning is C2, surrounded by C1, C to the north as well as R2, the south is zone C1 and R1. Across Keighley, or across 419 is the city of Roanoke. And it's also zone commercial and residential over there. And then to the west is zone R1. Future land use is core, where high-intensity urban, commercial, and high-density residential developments are encouraged. So the land uses within core areas may parallel the central business districts of Roanoke, Salem, and Vinton. Core areas may also be appropriate for larger-scale highway-oriented retail uses and reasonably-based shopping facilities. The proposed rezoning is consistent with that core future land use designation. Also, we did the Oak Grove Center Plan that this property is included in. Again, there's the vision for the Oak Grove Center Plan and several different principles and recommendations which are consistent with this proposal. As you remember, you know, we've been doing these activity center plans to locate higher-density commercial, higher-density residential in those areas. And so, again, this is consistent with that concept. Planning Commission held a public hearing on November 3rd. We had one citizen who spoke during the public hearing. The issues raised included commercial viability and success were raised as concerns during the initial rezoning in 2004. The overall number of apartments and the height of the apartments were raised as part of concerns as well. Visual impact of the development to surrounding neighborhoods and preference to the original concept versus what's being proposed. We also received a variety of emails on the proposed project. Those concerns dealt with buffers and fencing. They wanted to see an update to the traffic study from 2004, included a large green space between communities as a buffer. They prefer patio home or townhouse over apartments. There was a concern about reducing the number of buildings from four to three and also the number of stories from four stories to three stories. There were traffic and safety concerns, especially the Keighley Road, Triggerliff Mountain intersection. Discussion of property values, compatibility of land uses, density proposed was too high. Talked about stormwater and runoff issues, concerns, and then noise and air pollution concerns during construction were all issues raised in those emails. So Planning Commission discussed the future land use designation of the property over time, the Oak Grove Center Plan, the 2004 traffic study, the number of trips generated by the original commercial project versus the proposed multifamily development. So it is actually less than what was originally proposed back in 2004. So decreased in proposed traffic. The traffic improvements outlined in the 2004 traffic study were constructed and installed. Traffic decrease on Route 419 over time. The fencing and buffers, existing commercial buildings. They also talked about stormwater regulations, both from a quality and quantity standpoint. The site development reprocess, the height of the apartment buildings, the number of public notices that were sent out. And they talked about site lighting and the shortage of housing in the county. So Planning Commission recommends approval of the rezoning request from C2 to R4 with the following profit condition proposed or submitted by the property owner, that the property shall be developed in substantial performance with the drawing entitled KV Residential Community Development Plan prepared by Balzer and Associates Incorporated and Westwood Company dated September 12th of 2025, subject to any revisions required by the review agencies during the site plan review process. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Yeah.
I'll just, I'll just start with one real quickly because you mentioned the traffic, the traffic study, and you just mentioned kind of in passing that this is a great reduction of traffic predicted with apartments versus other commercial development. And so it was my understanding that the previous owner of all this development put in 100% of all the traffic needs as if that more intense use was coming.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Few questions, Mr. Thompson. The, I guess the petitioner will, will speak to this, but to this 2004 traffic study that Sook was mentioning, it looks like the number of trips decreased. I guess we can let the petitioner speak on that. And also, it looks like the, the Planning Commission went over a lot of, lot of issues. So I'd like to hear the petitioner address some of those items.
Sure.
The, yeah, I think, I think I'm fine with you.
Also, just to let you know, Ashley Medina with VDOT is here. If you have questions of VDOT, they are here as well.
Okay.
And also, representatives of the applicant are here as well to speak on the project.
Okay. Go ahead.
So question for VDOT. Did VDOT weigh in on the traffic data? Are they okay with the traffic data that's in the petition? Because I, I know mostly on rezonings, we have to require a traffic study. So I'm asking that question if you can comment on it.
We did review their trip generation that they've submitted based on their new proposal and concur that that is significantly less than what was included in the original TIA. And so any of the improvements that And so, any of the improvements that would have been put in with the original, or the original development would be adequate for what they're proposing.
All right, thank you very much.
Philip, I do have a question. It looks like you want us to repeal everything in that section. You want us to repeal everything. And so, we're going to come back with just a little paragraph that's going to hold us whole on all those things that we're doing away with. How do we have any guarantee that those standards are going to be kept from the existing Kegy Village to?
Okay. So, we talked with county attorney, so the part that would be repealed is the part that would be repealed just for the R4 piece, okay? So, the existing profit conditions on the C2 piece remains, okay? So, those, all those conditions would remain on the C2 piece, it's the nine acres would take all those away. Because a lot of those deal with conformance of the site plan, it has a lot of standards associated with the commercial development. So, there, those would all go away and the new profit condition would be it's in conformance with the concept plan shown that you have. So, that's what their proposal is.
The reason I'm asking is, the, like the exterior of the building, you'd want it to be harmonious to Kegy Village to a certain extent. And I just, I saw the word vinyl in there and, you know, I'll hear from the petitioner, but you know, we, I don't think we would want vinyl being used on a multifamily four-story building. So, it's stuff like that that I see
Correct.
we're going to lose, or not, I don't want to lose, I mean, I didn't want vinyl anyway. So.
Right. That's their proposal is to do that. I'll let them speak about the materials regarding of construction, and they could address all of that from a development standpoint.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, and we're still at four stories even though Planning Commission discussed four, three, three, four?
The comment, the comment was from a citizen that that's what they wanted to see, so they just discussed that. But again, from an economic standpoint, obviously, I think they need to make, in order to make it work, again, they could speak more to the four stories. Again, it's not the type, walk-up type that you would have for the garden apartments typically. They don't have elevators, this will have, all the buildings will have elevators and security as well as part of that. So, I'll let them speak to their project and the height and the number of units that go with that.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, I invite the representatives for the petitioners to come forward.
Good evening, members of the board. Ben Crew with Balzer and Associates, the agent for this particular request. And I'm going to walk through a couple items with you. Projects of this magnitude require a team, and so I've got Chris Burns here with Balzer and Associates, also Thomas Bell and Garrett Zekman with TTP Enterprises, who are the contract purchasers. I'm going to share a few details, hit a few highlights, answer some of those questions that you all provided, and then let Garrett provide a couple comments from his side, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. So, first of all, Philip covered the, Philip covered the details, so I'm not going to walk through exactly what the project is. I'm going to talk about, a little bit about the why, a little bit about the what, and a little bit about the how. And so, we're genuinely excited to be with you all this evening, so certainly this process is a marathon and not a sprint, and so we're excited to be with you all this evening to be at this point. And share, most importantly, share our vision for Kegy Village and the residential component and our proposal to build out basically the remainder of the property. And so, you know, as you all understand, Kegy Village was originally planned for this back section, almost 70,000 square feet of commercial, with an anchor tenant that up to this point never materialized. And so, you know, we feel along with the owner, you know, the vibrant success of Kegy Village was dependent on this anchor tenant or the back portion of property backfilling, you know, for the whole project to be cohesive. And this effort by the owner over time has not been without a lot of effort discussions and attention given to that. As you all know, there's four buildings that are constructed right now, there's a handful of tenants in those right now, they're in no way full. If you ride around the backside of the building, it's kind of, we'll call it the sad side, the front side's a little bit more vibrant, a little bit more active, which is great. And when we were looking at this project from a development team's standpoint, you know, a lot can change in 20 years, right? You know, comprehensive plans have changed, village center plans have changed, development trends are different, and community needs are, are different from that side. This property's been through multiple owners up to this point, and more importantly, it's been in different upswings in the economy, right? So, when this project was started, economy was still shooting up. Had a little dip that we all remember from '08 to 2012, and then the economy's been shooting after that. So, we've been on two upswings with nothing materializing for that back portion with multiple owners. And so, and that's really why we're standing here before you all this evening. From a Kegy Village ownership perspective, I'm not talking for the owner, but it's my understanding there's been inquiries regarding the commercial pad site in the back for an anchor tenant. As I've mentioned, none of those materialized from a handful of factors, right? Not from one factor or another, but, you know, dealt with access, visibility, location, et cetera. As you all know, you know, new tenant grocers are coming to the valley, including Roanoke County, which is exciting, but none have selected this, this site being a pad-ready site for commercial development. You know, these folks are proceeding with other sites with significant challenges and cost in lieu of this pad-ready site. I think that speaks volumes and brings us into kind of alignment for their quest, for the request this evening. So, it's important to share from the current ownership side that they wouldn't, they would not engage with our team, and we're about four or five months behind where we would like to be right now, because they wanted to make sure that all efforts were exhausted for those commercial opportunities before they went this direction. And so, I, I think it's, I think it's important because from an ownership side, the owner's still maintaining that front portion, the five or so acres in front. And so, we've had deliberate, direct, detailed discussions with them because we're now going to be direct neighbors, just like we're going to be neighbors with the residents of towns next door. And so, there's a lot of direct conversations to make sure that the project's aligned and they could build off of each other as part of the project. And so, looking at this from a big picture standpoint, you know, this project is residential at its core, dense residential at its core, but incorporating that with the bigger Kegy Village, we're creating a true mixed-use development, right? So, we've got layering within the development, we've got commercial up front, we're proposing residential in the back section, and, you know, we've seen this as a recipe for success in many locations, and we, we hope it is here too. It was important, as we were going through this, to make sure we had alignment with, you know, we, Philip talked a little bit about the core, but when you look at the reimagined Oak Grove Plan, the Oak Grove Center Plan, you know, that was adopted four years ago, the, the first picture in the hype video is Kegy Village, the picture on the, the front of the plan is Kegy Village. Obviously, there's emphasis here, and we want to be able to support that. You know, there was community engagement, it talked about a desired use of apartments, different principles, it talked about mixed-use developments, and it all started adding up together that this, you know, this is certainly an opportunity to be able to support. And so, we feel that that balances together. Certainly, Roanoke County's right in the middle of analyzing their housing, as many localities have in the region. You know, a lot of localities are struggling with the diversity of housing options, whether, you know, depending on where you're looking, depending on what the locality is. You know, there's a housing market analysis that just came out, I think it was the second video, that talked about the existing stock, which was interesting in Roanoke County, you know, provided some good insight of, you know, ancillary discussion about a healthy housing balance, but seeing where the imbalances or where the, where the emphasis was currently. So, more, more to come on that. I think it's important if we rewind a little bit and look at 2004, which is a little bit ago, before I wore glasses. And so, this property was originally zoned C1 and R1, and so, before it was rezoned to C2C. And, you know, with this request, we bake in a little bit of that zoning layering again. So, we hold the C2 along Electric and Kegy, and then we go to a more, a more intense residential district, but not commercial, in the backside of it. So, we create that layering from the density of Electric Road and Kegy back into those properties. And then you move to, like the town subdivision, that's a two-family or duplex buildings, right? So, they're a little bit more intense. If you go a little bit further down Kegy, you go to, back to the standard single family that you see all across Roanoke County. So, that, that layering effect from a zoning side, we thought was important. I think Philip covered the, the project improvement side, we don't need to, we don't need to go through that. Certainly, have met many neighbors in the town subdivision, we had a good time, you know, our, our team genuinely enjoyed talking to those folks. We've had supplemental meetings, a lot of email back and forth, which has been great because, you know, you don't know the details until you know all the facts, and so they shared a lot of information with us. And we spent a lot of time on that western property line in regards to that buffer. And so, there's a buffer that's on the proffered plan that has trees, shrub and a six-foot screening fence. And that, that comes in close proximity to a couple of those neighbors that we talked with, you know, the Wrights and the Bradshaw's that are right next to this development. And so, we talked about what that meant, some of the existing vegetation that they have in place, how we can work together to keep that and try to make the, the best of that. There was also plannings done as part of the initial development that are mature out there on the backside. And so, there's, there's 20 or 25 or 30-foot evergreens that we want to keep as part of the project. And so, we don't, we don't want to tear those out and just put a six-foot tree in, there's, there's limited value to that. So, had a lot of discussions of that, you know, our team, our team is committed to that, that's why it's on the proffered plan, it's going to be installed. We, thank you to Ashley and VDOT for sharing a little bit on the transportation side. I'll give you a couple key facts that I thought were kind of interesting, you know? It's unusual to see all improvements go in at the beginning of a project, especially on a phased project, but those are all in. And, you know, talking numbers a little bit, you know, the, the, the real positive impact of this project is kind of twofold. One, we want to talk numbers real quickly, you know, 70,000 square feet of commercial generates about 4,600 trips a day, okay? We're proposing 224 dwelling units and four apartment buildings, and that's consisting of a little bit over 1,000 trips a day, right? So, what was there before were between 70 and 80% less, and that was the discussion that we had with VDOT, that there was such a drastic decrease in all the improvements are in, that from our discussions, they were satisfied with what, with what we were presenting. The other part of that, that I think's important is, this project's going to have passenger vehicles, Amazon deliveries, pizza, it's not going to have tractor trailers, it's not going to have vehicles pulling up to loading docks. It's a different type of, of traffic for this project, along with the just baseline math of the reduction, right? So, it's kind of two parts of that that I think, that I think are important. So, I think we, I think we answered a lot of the questions during the Planning Commission meeting. I appreciate Philip sharing kind of the laundry list that was shown on the screen a little bit earlier. Happy to talk, talk through any of those things, but we're, you know, we're excited about this project, you know? The, these are, you know, market rate, luxury type apartments. The, the makeup of the building, I think, is important, so the buildings are made up of one-bedroom, two-bedroom and three-bedroom units, okay? And if you take a breakdown, so there's 56 units per building, right? There's about 28 one-beds, 22 beds and eight three-beds, right? So, it's, it's, it's going to be smaller families, individuals, married folks that are wanting a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom type scenario. This is not a, not a situation where we're just overloaded with three-bedroom units that are going to be, have a ton of schoolchildren or anything like that. And so, I just want to kind of share the, the building makeup. Let's see, I think the other question, Mr. Radford, that you asked, looking at the building elevation, so the building height ranges in about 45 feet to about 54 feet, depending on where the undulations in the soffit are, or in the parapet are. And so, to create that variability, we've made sure that we meet setbacks related to that, but we've got all those undulations in that to create some interest that we feel is a pretty good, pretty good-looking building. And so, with that, if you'll stick with us for just a couple more minutes, I'll invite Garrett to share a couple items, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions or go to the public hearing.
Sounds good, come on forward.
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the board. My name is Garrett Sekman, and I'm here on behalf of Thomas Builders and TPP Enterprises. I want to first begin by thanking the board for opportunity to speak tonight and for the time and engagement the county staff has given to our, and the Planning Commission has given to our request for this rezon. We appreciate thoughtful process Roanoke County consistently brings to its land use decisions, and that's one of the reasons we think this is an awesome project to bring forward. Just a little bit about our company. For more than a decade, our company has been committed, committed to building high-quality communities throughout Central and Southwest Virginia. Our portfolio includes multifamily communities, mixed-use development, single-family neighborhoods and commercial projects that serve both residents and local businesses. To date, we've delivered over 3,000 apartments, hundreds of single-family neighborhoods and our homes, and along with that, commercial spaces that support regional employers and strengthen local communities. Many of you may be familiar with some of our work. Close by, actually, we've got a project we just started off of Orange Avenue, across from the Old Jersey Lily site. We've got over 700 apartments planned for there with some commercial in the front. We've also got a project off of 81 and Roanoke Road in Bogtuck County that we just wrapped up over there, it's right on the corner there. And those are just some of ours, like, that are close by you guys. We've developed in Wayne'sboro, Blacksburg, Lynchburg and even Bedford and Campbell County. One thing that's important for us to communicate tonight is how we operate. Thomas Builders is not a short-term developer, we're a long-term stakeholder. We're vertically integrated team, we plan, design and ultimately manage the communities that we build. That long-term ownership influences every decision we make, from architectural choices to the durability of materials and how the project fits within the broader neighborhood. You actually mentioned vinyl earlier. We don't ever use vinyl on any of our projects, our houses, we're, we're very proud to actually say that. We love to use stone, brick, high-quality materials. When we invest in a community, we're committed to being involved for decades, not just years. Our approach is guided by a simple philosophy, build communities that add value, not just on day one, but for many years to come. This project before you is designed to deliver high-quality market rate housing that supports the county's growing workforce, enhances housing availability and contributes to county's economic strength. We know from experience that well-designed apartments play a crucial role in attracting employers, retaining young professionals and supporting local businesses. Housing is infrastructure, the kind that reinforces every other part of a community. This development includes thoughtful architectural, durable construction and amenities that promote connection and livability. Our clubhouse that you see on the site, and I don't think we did a rendering of it on here, has, is just fully amenitized. You've got a swimming pool, you've got a game room, you've got a movie room, just amenities to make people want to be here. We take pride in creating places where these people want to live, not because they have to, but because they choose to. And we also take seriously our responsibility to fit into the character of the county and to create something that residents can feel proud to have in their community. We're proud of our track record, not only for what we build, but for how we operate. We maintain open communication with local staff and officials, and we genuinely collaborate. Every jurisdiction we've worked with has played a part in making our projects better, and we view that partnership as essential. Our goal is to deliver projects that make people proudly call these places home and come home to. In closing, I want to thank the board again for your time, your attention and your commitment to thoughtful growth. We believe this project will be a long-term asset for Roanoke County, complementing surrounding area and contributing to the county's vision for responsible, sustainable development. We're excited about the opportunity to continue investing in Roanoke County and to be part of the community, so thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. All right, questions? Go right ahead.
I have, I have several questions, comments, and, and I know some of this might be rhetorical, but I really want the room to hear some of the commentary. And I keep hearing luxury apartment, and I'm wondering, Mr. Crew, if you can just tell us what makes it luxury, two-part question, what makes it luxury and who's the target market?
Sure. Do you want to walk through that?
Yeah, I could talk, I can talk a little bit through that. So, what makes it luxury is we don't, we put a lot of amenities into this, we put a lot of design, architect features, even trim and stuff on the inside. Also, an important part to talk about our buildings are, I think Ben mentioned a little earlier, is we do it a little different, more like a hotel setup. So, you have an interior air-conditioned heated-cooled corridor that has an elevator served for the building, and you have really even nice stairwells on the ends. And so, it's just not your typical apartment you see.
I think I heard something about a grand lobby?
Not necessarily grand lobby, there is a lobby you enter into, and then you go into the elevator right there.
Okay.
Like I said, it's, think of it more of like a hotel as you into the elevator right there. Like I said, think of it more of like a hotel, as you have that corridor there. And you've got security on the outside cameras, you've got a FOB system. So, I mean, just to get into the building is nice, and there's a lot of security, and then you still have to get into your apartment. So.
And who's the target market?
Target market is really, is your working-class people. You know, we're not looking for, we're not necessarily affordability part, but actually really market rate.
So when you say market rate, are you talking about young professionals mostly?
Yes, ma'am.
So this is not necessarily senior living, but seniors may find that they like it?
Yeah, and actually, I'm glad you said that. A project in Bogtott County I spoke about a little bit earlier has a ton of senior people. They love, they sell their property, and they just love coming to a project like this where they can just enjoy and have amenities. They can take their grandkids, too, and stuff like that.
So this was a conversation that I had earlier, and I was asking some specifics about the rent and about what the range of rent was. And to me, it seemed like it was high-ish, because that sounds high-ish to me. And why wouldn't they want to invest that money into a home, to a starter home? And I thought it was interesting to hear your response. So if you could just re-
Sure. Yeah, so the parts of that, so there's one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedrooms. And the rates fluctuate. But you might start at $1,500 or $1,600 a month for one-bedroom, and then you may go to $2,200 for a three-bedroom, depending on, you know, what the demand is. And the demand continues to be very high. But it's interesting, we deal with a lot of young professionals at our architecture and engineering firm, and they seek out locations like this to live instead of 20 or 30 or 40 years ago, when, hey, everyone wants to be in a ranch as a starter home. Right? And that's why these communities continue to be in such demand, because there's no maintenance associated with it, obviously, and it's highly amenitized. And so we're seeing these four-story apartments, elevator served, that has all these mix of folks in it, in a lot of localities now. And that's becoming the new norm for apartment construction. And so they're still three-story garden-style walk-up, but if you live on the third story, it sure is nice to ride an elevator instead of walk up three stories. And so it changes, you know, open corridor, that type of thing, and the security side. So it's an interesting dynamic for, you know, new young professionals that I've dealt with from our firm side.
So some of the luxury items that I heard or read about was that it included some of the granite finishes, that there's the entry with the key fobs. So the security is there. There's outdoor amenities. So there's a pet area?
Yeah, so most of these communities have, you know, specific pet relief areas, but also off-leash fenced-in pet areas that may be astroturf, or, you know, a lot of the communities have those. And when Garrett says, you know, clubhouse with a pool, the pool is extremely nice, and so is the pool deck around it. It is not just, you walk into a, you know, I won't name the brand of hotel, and it's a, you know, five-foot by 20-foot pool. They're very nice that they put in their communities.
So would you say that, I did kind, toured the Valley Dale with some of the outdoor amenities. That's one of y'all's projects?
No, that's a different developer.
Okay, but it's similar to that.
Valley Dale's is a very similar setup as far as, you know, four-story elevator served, you know, highly amenitized outside, very nice pool, very similar to what this group does on their project.
So one of the things that fascinated me was that from their study, they have determined that young professionals don't really want to start out in a starter home. They want to start out in these kinds of apartments. And that was one of my takeaways from our conversation. Just a couple more things, if I could.
Sure.
Daleville is one of your projects.
Correct, yes.
Okay, and so I thought these elevations looked similar to that. So Rona County, when we're talking about our housing stock, we don't have this. And so this is maybe what you're determining is a missing link for Rona County, that we have the single family, but we don't necessarily have this type of apartment that is full of amenities to what you're speaking of.
Yeah, this is a newer product. And so like Garrett mentioned, you know, this is happening in a lot of the surrounding localities, happening in the city of Salem, it's happening in Bogtott, it's happening in Rona City. There are projects that are coming in Blacksburg and Franklin or Bedford out by the lake. And this is the new product line, you know, this taller four-story elevator served. And you have to have all those components to make it work. Right? So you're not going to build a two-story or a three-story building that's going to be elevator-served based on cost. Right? So you need to meet that density, and then you can also have the amenities that go along with it.
So something else that I heard in some of the conversations has been that there might be people who are living outside of Rona County but wanted this type of living. It may work in Rona County. This may actually bring them into the county to live.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there's certainly metrics and data to support either, and this was part of the housing study that was in the video that was presented about, it was really interesting about where folks were living, and then whether they were commuting in or whether they were commuting out. And, you know, the golden rule is they're living within Rona County, they're working in Rona County, and they're staying in Rona County. Right? And so for many, many years, rewind 10 or 15 years, some of the adjacent localities didn't have any apartments, but they had incredible industry occurring. And so you would have this kind of export in the morning of people would be living in an adjacent locality and then going to work and commuting, putting more vehicles on 81, putting more vehicles on the adjacent street network. And so, you know, projects like this will hopefully keep those folks centered. And it's a little bit different from others that have been constructed. You know, it's not, it's a pretty good clip to get to the interstate. So, you know, this one's a little bit more nested within the county, and so we thought the location was ideal for the product.
So just a couple more things. I found interest in your commentary in the staff report about you didn't see any substantial increase in fire and rescue, parks and rec, or the schools. Can you speak to that and why you feel that is true?
Sure. So these communities-
I'm sorry.
Everybody good?
Yeah, we're good. Go for it.
Okay. Quick answer, three bullet points. Due to the makeup of the building, the, you know, heavy on the one-bedrooms, and less heavy on the twos, and really light on the threes, that contributes to a product that there'll be all types of folks that live here, but very few children. It's kind of interesting. They have some baked-in metrics for communities that they've developed with 300 or 400 units, and they may have 20 children or less that live in the community. And so we would expect something similar in here, especially with the one-bedroom and two-bedroom count as part of that. And so as part of these communities, there's, it has the standard call and service rate, but it's nothing special. There's no medical use associated with this or anything. And so we don't anticipate any demand that wouldn't be, you know, usual than any other development.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, Tammy, go ahead.
I have several questions. First of all, you've mentioned security.
Yes, ma'am.
What type of security do you offer?
We usually, we have security cameras on all the buildings, inside and outside, and then like a FOB system to get into the building.
Okay, all right. And in looking at this, I have to be honest, the thing that has intrigued me the most is the elevators in it. And the reason being, I am in real estate. I'm a real estate broker. And in Rona County, I can't think in southwest county of any other building that, apartment building, not building, apartment building, that offers apartments with elevators. With that being said, I've had a lot of clients that have mentioned, you know, I would love to move out of my home, whether it's in Pen Forest as a split foyer or one of the other surrounding homes. And they will say, I can't afford a patio home. I really can't afford a condo with HOA fees. But this right here is something if they wanted to move out of their split foyer home or two-story home, go to something like this, being older, have an elevator to take them up instead of trying to climb flights of steps. The other, and I know that y'all are saying your target market is a younger group, but I feel like you're probably going to see an older market here, to be honest. One of the questions I've got is, and you may have not even looked at this yet, but as far as entering into these buildings, are you going to have access where older people can walk right in? Or are there going to be a lot of steps that they have to go up?
They're required to be ADA requirements, which is, it's ramped right in. So you can walk right in, no steps.
Okay. And you're, again, your target rent, 1,500 for the one-bedroom, probably 2,200 for the three-bedroom. Is there any other amenities that you could say would be in these that would help the elderly community? Walk-in showers, one of them, instead of tub shower condos?
We do have a few units that we offer walk-in showers and stuff like that.
Okay, all right. I'm just trying to figure out, I just could see the elderly wanting to be there and stepping in the tubs and things like that, and walking up steps and the whole nine yards.
Yeah, I mean, we appreciate that question, because this is the same, these are the same kind of comments and questions that we're receiving in all the localities, because this is a new product. And that's why it's so popular. And that's why when we're in the middle of construction, leasing is already occurring prior to even a building being done, because there's demand for this unique product.
Well, I will say, I have seen the ones in Daleville, and they are, I haven't actually been up to them, but you can see them from the road. And they look like very nice buildings, and it looks like a great community. So I feel like you might be surprised at the amount of elderly people you end up with in this area.
That's awesome. Thank you.
So I'm good.
Ms. Moni.
Garrett, assuming this board approves petition, when do you start building?
As soon as you approve plans after that. So we've already contracted with Balzer to prep the plans if you approve and everything like that. And what would turn around, seven months?
So talking about start of construction, so I anticipate start of construction. We are in November now, probably a start in March, April?
Okay.
Yeah.
My second question, Ben. Slide 11, I don't know, Rhonda, it's our page 302 in our agenda, and it was slide 11 that Mr. Thompson showed, the concept plan. I'm very familiar with Caggy Village. Often, my wife demands that I take her to Toastery.
That is one of the very popular spots.
The concern I get, not much a concern, a question is, with the number of units that you have, and looking at the in-out, I guess I'm kind of worried that, number one, you'd have an awful lot of traffic trying to come in and out, let's say at peak times, assuming people are working.
Sure.
Because the way we go in is more of the, it's more to the middle of the commercial piece, and it's not at the far end that you show on the concept plan.
Sure.
So is the plan to really have the bulk of the traffic at that, what is that? Would that be the western end?
The western side, page left.
Yeah. Is that where the bulk, is that where you're looking at bulk of traffic, number one? And then number two, with the number of units you have, I know Rona County has often wanted or required second access for emergency access purposes.
Sure.
And I guess I'm worried that with the number of units you have, and primarily looking at just one access egress point, talk to me about that.
Sure, yeah. So let's unpack that a little bit. So the way that I would approach this is a little bit more balanced than pushing all the traffic to one spot. And so, you know, we can think about this from, let's talk a little bit, entering traffic from Electric Road. Right? So there's an entry from Electric Road that goes behind Duncan. And so if you, I would anticipate that if you live in building C or building D, you can be from Electric Road and parking beside the building in 30 seconds. So if I was providing the traffic engineer for, traffic engineering for this is, I think we'd be a little bit more balanced in splitting up those entry trips into the three locations throughout the project. Because the entry from Electric Road is not a bad entry. It's level, it's flat. The middle entry is kind of what you described as the main entry, right? Landscape, center island, two rows, one in and one out. And then the third entry is probably the most awkward out of them, because it has a curve and it's downhill. Right? And so depending on where you live in the community, I would think there's probably a little bit more balance on the in-and-out traffic than just focusing in one location. You know, as part of this, if you're working on this project today, may not have two entrance points, two entrance points on Caggy. And so, you know, a lot of the priorities in VDOT, as you all know of working through projects, is we want to minimize the entry locations and the access points onto the main roads. Right? And so I see a little bit more of a balanced approach on entering and exiting traffic from those three locations throughout the development, based on where that person is living in building A through D.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. North?
Yeah, I've had a lot of thoughts about this project.
Put that plan back up. Go ahead.
The last several weeks, at my first glance, I'm like, gee, you know, this is commercial property. We don't have a lot of good commercial property, but yet this is set there for 20 years. It's like, what's wrong with this picture? And so I asked Phillip the other day, how many spots, commercial plots we have in the county. And that was a learning lesson. We have plenty spread all around the county. So this hasn't developed any interest. The interest that was there for the retail didn't pan out. My hope on this was we might see patio homes. But I also learned from talking to staff that there's not a lot of builders interested in building patio homes. The elevators caught my attention, too. Reminds me of some apartments my son just moved into in Illinois. And they have retail on the first floor apartments on second and third, elevator and a hallway that looks like you're indoor in an office building. And it's got retail, and it also attracts restaurants, and even a hotel behind there. So, you know, I'm impressed with what I've learned about this. And then I thought, well, wait a minute, I need to find out more about your company. So I typed that in, and bingo, you've got about four locations in Lynchburg. And one of them is really a luxurious place, because the rent was pretty much higher than what you're talking about here. And I'm familiar with the other apartments, because I go buy them on 460. I wish y'all well there, because that's going to be a gridlock one day with traffic. And I hope and pray that they'll improve that corridor. So I've tried to find every way I can to, you know, chip away at this and get into it more so than I might have thought I would. And it's going to, and VDOT says okay on the traffic situation. So it's kind of hard for me to find anything to ask any more questions about, because some of my colleagues and I have talked, and we just kind of vetted it out pretty good. So it's too bad it's not in the Hollins District. I could move into it one day. Anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. North. Garrett, let me ask you a couple of questions. Are you guys going to be the owners?
Yes, sir.
Okay, how long?
That's a beaten, we don't have a set timeline on that. Most of our projects, we've been trying to hold on to, and-
Okay, so you don't sell it, you keep it in your portfolio?
Yes, sir.
So you're going to be a neighbor for a long time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, very good. Are your units fully sprinkled?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So Ben, do you have fire flow out there?
We do.
Okay, great. What do you do for your trash collection?
We usually do a compactor. One of the biggest services we work with is Bayes Trash Removal, but we do one or two compactors on-site, and they get emptied two to three times a week, just depends on the demand.
They're internal, right?
Yes, sir.
You've got central trash, and boom, it goes down somewhere. And so you have a maintenance crew, property management on-site?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Okay, looking at your site plan, it looks like, are you purchasing the land where that western entrance is? Is that part of your property?
Correct.
Okay, great. So the other property, you just mentioned the one coming off Electric Road, Ben. Do you guys have crawl easements?
Yes. Yeah, well, not in place today, but yes, they will be in place.
All right. So we actually got three entrances. You got Electric Road- You got Electric Road, then you got two off of Caggy Road, right?
Correct.
Okay. So I didn't know if, you knew that, but. How much is this, this project worth for our community, your investment?
I mean, I think it's worth, worth.
So that was one of the items that, that we discussed. It's about a $50 million investment, including land acquisition.
Okay. I did look up some school information, but now that you, you talk about, you're not going to have a lot of, a lot of children there. I did go back and find that the schools that feed into that area, I got it. Oak Grove Elementary is at ninety-two percent capacity. Hidden Valley Middle School is sixty-two percent. Hidden Valley High School is sixty, roughly sixty-five percent. So there's plenty of room. Might be tight in an elementary school if you do end up with some students. And I think, I think that's all my questions.
David, I've got one more.
Okay. All right. Hang on. Martha was asking about the luxury part. And between the two of them, they read off, you know, what, what you're doing inside the units. What I didn't hear is what's your flooring in your central area in each unit? Is it, what's it going to be?
It's a luxury vinyl flooring. And then one of the also luxury parts about of our apartments, we supply all the appliances. There's internet provided at the apartment. I mean, you move in, you're ready to go. You don't have to worry about anything with it.
Okay.
And you have granite or quartz countertops on all of them. I mean, top-of-the-line cabinets, stuff like that.
Okay. Great. And the screening up on top, I think I saw, I guess that's where you're going to put all your AC outdoor units?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we can't see those or hear them?
You won't be able to see them or hear them.
Okay. All right. Very good. I think that's all I have. Tammy?
I do have one more question. When you started speaking about the road going behind Dunkin' Donuts and I've pulled up my iPad over here and I'm trying to look at that, that looks like a very narrow road for cars to be passing back and forth in the drive-through.
Yeah, it's one, it's one lane.
One lane. So will that be widened at all or is that going to stay one-way?
It's a one-way from Electric. Because we don't want any outbound traffic to Electric at that location.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure because I thought Howard, too, passed.
Good comment.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
Okay. Any other questions? Here are none. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have anybody signed up to speak? So at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I assume I can make a motion as the chair? Okay. I was waiting for him to go, yeah. Well, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion, but I want to make a few comments. I myself have, and my family have experience doing apartments in multifamily in Roanoke County. And, and I did read a lot of those comments from the residents that live in the towns about traffic, property values. I can tell you when, when my family, we built McVitty Forest, it didn't, it didn't, didn't hurt the values of any of the single-family houses around right now. I know McVitty Forest and other patio homes we've built, they're highly sought after because we don't have enough of them. And I have lots of people that live in the towns that I know and they have a similar situation. They're really sought after. They don't, they stay on the market very long. And it's, it's a great problem to have. I think the two entities can survive and work together. And, and I appreciate the investment and the risk that, that your, your company's going to take to come into Roanoke County and put that kind of development. I, I know all about risk-taking. But the, the last apartments that my family built back in the seventies, my dad built Normandy Knoll. And it was garden style. You walk up and, you know, you go to your floor. It was only two, two sections. And then same, you know, within an eight, nine-year period, my father built Cedar Point. And that, that started a combination of townhouse apartments and garden apartments. So they were starting to mix them up in the seventies. I had to work at both those complexes in the summertime, vacuuming all those outdoor carpets and those stairs and all that. That was part of my summer sweat equity. So I know about apartments and the multifamily we did at McVitty Forest. And we, we hit those with high-end amenities also, using greenway trails around the complex. I think you're going to, I think I saw that in there, if you have room to do greenways. But that's a, a good way for people to get out and around. So with all that said, I am ready to make a motion. This is the motion. I find that the proposed rezoning request, number one, is consistent with the Roanoke County Comprehensive Plan and the Oak Grove Center Plan's vision, principles, and recommendations. Number two, it is good zoning practice. Number three, I don't think, it will not result in substantial detriment to the community. I therefore move that we approve the rezoning request as it has been requested, removing all existing proffers attached to the property and imposing the following one proffer. And that is, the property will, shall be developed in substantial conformance with the drawing entitled KV Residential Community Development Plan, prepared by Balzer and Associates, a Westwood company, dated 9/12/2025, subject to any revisions required by the review agencies during the site plan review process. That's the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would say that, number one, this is consistent with our core designation. Number two, it's consistent with the Oak Grove Plan, which I think is, is right on point. Number three, the traffic study information and what VDOT has told us is, is a positive. Number four, we have, we need, in my opinion, we need this kind of development. We, we did a housing study back in, help me, Mr. North?
Nineteen.
Nineteen. We're doing another one now. And I guess finally, if you look at this from a, a classic planning approach, the classic planning approach talks about having commercial retail in the front and in the back, you got residential. And I know, I read all the emails we had from citizens. And back in 2004, I was sitting where Mr. Lubek is sitting now in the very bitter and angry public hearing that accompanied the rezoning for the Caggy development. And unfortunately, this development never proceeded for what I think the county hoped. And I think this board, we're well aware of a lot of the different possibilities that have come before us or that hints have come before us with respect to other commercial development. None of those ever came to fruition. And I don't know why. I think this is a wonderful location for commercial development. But for whatever reason, it never happened. And so I think as Mr. Crewe indicated, it's been twenty years. Circumstances have changed, markets have changed. For all those reasons, I would support this, this petition, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes. Okay. We move to item N, reports and inquiries of board members. Number one, Mr. Mahoney, now that you're warmed up.
I'm warmed up now. Mr. Chairman, I have three things I'd like to talk about. Item number one is, a week ago, the folks at Hunting Hills Homeowners Association, Carol White, who's the president of the HOA, invited me. She invited, he did Chief Poindexter. She also invited Brian Blevins from VDOT. She also invited our crime prevention coordinator, Caleb Forehand. And we, we got an earful from the folks at Hunting Hills. They're unhappy with their real estate assessments. They're unhappy with, I'm sorry, our friends from VDOT left. They're very unhappy with what's going on with respect to the 220 improvements where you can't go from Lowe's to Home Depot. You got to go down 220 and make a U-turn. And then they're also unhappy with respect to allegations of commercial operations occurring in one of the homes in Hunting Hills that are residential. So I coordinated with our planning and zoning folks and they're looking at that. We had about eighty people.
Wow.
But this was their annual HOA meeting. So that was the excitement a week ago. My second item, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I want to do a little bragging about this board. This board has taken a strong leadership position with respect to the Virginia Association of Counties. The Virginia Association of Counties, in my opinion, is a bipartisan organization that attempts to protect the, the powers and authorities of local government. And we try to put together recommendations and requests to the Virginia General Assembly to protect the powers and authority of local government. But I also want to brag on the fact that Mr. North, next year, will be the president of the Virginia Association of Counties.
Yeah.
So I, Mr. North has worked very hard on that. And Phil, we're looking forward to having a big party when you become president.
Yeah.
But I also want to recognize the fact that I think Ms. Hooker is on the education committee. Mr. Radford is on the energy and development committee. And I am on the finance and elections committee. One of the, one of the, one of the interesting things I learned at the recent Virginia Association of Counties Annual Meeting a week ago, we had a presentation from Vivian Watts. This sounds like inside baseball, but Ms. Watts is chairman of the House of Delegates Appropriation Committee. She is a very smart and very powerful person in the Virginia General Assembly. She indicated to our committee what might, and I emphasize might, what might happen in January and February are several things. Thing number one is, the appropriation committee might be looking at increasing the state income tax. They're looking at creating two new income brackets. The first bracket is anybody over 100,000 annual income might be paying more. And then the next bracket, someplace higher than that, the second bracket, might pay a whole lot more. The second interesting bit of information is the General Assembly might also look at expanding the sales tax to cover digital activity. So if you are downloading a book or streaming movies or music, if you are downloading software, you're going to start paying an expanded sales tax on that. Delegate Watts indicated, depending on how broadly they might consider expanding the sales tax and what encompasses all digital services, that could generate anywhere from one to two billion, B billion dollars for the Commonwealth. That's a big deal because the general fund budget for the Commonwealth is about 32 billion, Phil. So there are things that are happening soon that I hope our citizens are aware of because there are needs for filling the gap for Medicaid funding. There are needs for K-12 education funding. So I think what will be happening in Richmond, January, February, March, will be very interesting and I would suggest, and I would hope if our citizens are watching, that they'll pay attention to that. We have, we have Mr. Rasool, although he does not represent any part of Roanoke County, he's next door in Roanoke City. He's on, Phil, help me, education subcommittee?
Education.
For appropriations. And then, of course, Mr. Terry Austin of Bonita, he's also on appropriations. But a word to the wise citizens, your taxes are going up next year. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yeah. Thanks for the good news. And with that, we go to Tammy Shepherd.
Well, I have got, I've had a busy week. This week, I actually, when I first came on the board, I requested an RFP for the Vinton Business Center. And we had a community meeting this week looking at one of the developers that answered the RFP and met with that. And I felt like it went really well. And we are one step closer to being able to do something with the Vinton Business Center. I also had a Mount Pleasant Community Meeting, which, believe it or not, it was a lot of people there, but it was a very short meeting because everybody was very pleased with everything going on. There were no complaints. There were a few requests for a few items. Officer Forehand was there and he didn't have a whole lot of items to report, which was really nice to hear. So that was a really quick meeting. And then County Administrator Richard Kaywood and I met with Town of Vinton, Brad Gross, and Pete Peters this week and updated both localities on things that are going on. That turned out well. And two more items. I want to thank all the citizens in Vinton for voting for me at the election. And I am actually free from running again for the next four years. Y'all are stuck with me for a little while. So after a year and a half of having three elections, I'm, I'm glad to put that past me. So thank you to all of the citizens for your votes. And then I've got one other item. And I know I should be saying congratulations. However, I'm a little bit sad because our deputy county administrator has decided to retire on us. And I know for you, that is very exciting and you have lots of things to look forward to, like traveling and maybe a beach trip somewhere in there. But congratulations and thank you for all that you've done, Rebecca. You have been fantastic to work with and I really, really, really appreciate all the hard work you've done. But more than that, I appreciate your friendship because you have truly become, I say my sister here by another mother because we are the same age. So I wish I were retiring with you. So congratulations and thank you again. And that's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you, Tammy. Mr. North?
Well, be careful of those people that retire. You just never know who's going to tap you on the shoulder. Next thing you know, look what happened to me. Anyhow, lots going on this late October and in November. Attended the Virginia Blue-Red Series on State of Transportation in Bonita County. Representatives from the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, the Pasture Rail Authority, the Roanoke Blacksburg Airport, and VDOT gave insights on upcoming transportation projects and priorities in our region. The event showcased key transportation opportunities and challenges on the horizon. October 29th, several of us attended the Go Virginia State of the Region, Supervisor Mahoney, County Administration, at the Go Virginia Region Two Council's 2025 State of the Region Reception at the Tobin Museum. Leaders from across the state and region talked about 2025 growth and diversification. Jason Elkubai, president and CEO of the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, was there and a keynote speaker. By the way, Region Two has contributed to eighty, eighty wins, 7,400 jobs, and 1.7 billion in economic impact, which is pretty huge for this region. Some challenges are jobs changing to high-tech workforce, more pad-ready sites, and energy growth. These are things that are on the horizon for future development and discussion. October 30th, the Virginia Regional Transit Ribbon had a cutting, ribbon cutting, and I provided some remarks for the VRT ribbon cutting. This is our new CoreTran vendor as of this summer. The service provides 12,000 trips per year in Roanoke County. The service provides 12,000 trips per year in Roanoke County. And then October 30th, we had the Roanoke Valley Alligating Regional Commission Annual Dinner at Explorer Park, attended along with Chairman Radford and Administration, Richard Kaywood and Doug Blunt, their annual dinner, and Doug and I both gave comments and brief updates on Explorer Park to those in attendance from around the region. Then on November 10th, that weekend, we went to the 91st Session of ACO and heard many presentations on transportation, budget, finance, and forecast. Governor Youngkin also gave a report press release yesterday, actually it was Friday, and so far since July 1, we are 5.5% above fiscal year last year for our official forecast, which is about 508 billion dollars, which is huge, and we're only into about three months of the new fiscal year. Virginia is in good shape. Some mandatory, high-priority budget drivers coming up for the state of Virginia, and I won't read them all, but one is 974 million for K through 12 re-benchmarking, not including a new ADM sales tax forecast. Children's Services Act cost will increase 180 million in the Commonwealth. Salary increases for teachers and state employees of 3% each year, which is 600 million-dollar cost item. Also, remaining JLR K through 12 recommendations, since they've already removed the sport cap, which has helped, they're now gonna look at remaining unfunded recommendations, including unfunded staffing such as teacher assistants and assistant principals, small schools' economies of scale, more accurate cost of living adjustments. Be interesting to see how that comes out. I think today, only 2/3 of staff are funded by the state, so that could be a big plus if they're able to absorb some more of those costs. And then economic development projects such as business-ready development sites will be discussed and addressed, and maybe they'll even give more attention to that item. So these are some things that we need to watch out for in addition to those items that Chairman Mahoney mentioned.
He got promoted.
With that said, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Wow, okay. Ms. Hooker?
I've just got a few things. I wanted to just mention that on November 6, a couple of weeks ago, we had our ribbon cutting for the West River Greenway, and it was fabulous, it was a long time coming, it was a great group, a great celebration. I also attended ACO, as was mentioned before, I currently chair the Education Committee, which is really a great advocacy group for public education, K through 12, and some of the main recommended legislative positions and priority statements that ACO will be taking forward in their legislative program. And I think some of the highlights were full state funding for public education, additional statewide funding options for localities for capital and school construction, construction costs, wish we could've had that a couple of years ago. Encourage localities, increase teacher salary, and early childhood care. The early childhood education is increasingly framed as a workforce and economic issue, and may be one of the top priorities for the 2026 legislative session. So that's just some of the highlights of what our committee discussed, and I would be remiss to not also mention, Rebecca, and we've so enjoyed working with you, and you truly have been such a godsend to us personally and professionally. Your expertise has always been appreciated, and one of the things that I admire so much about you is that you have such a sweet disposition when we ask the same question over and over. So thank you for that. Thank you for that. Thank you for your loyalty, your hard work, your service to the citizens of Roanoke County will be missed. So we love you, we wish you well, and your new adventure of retirement. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. I've got a couple of things here to mention. First, I have a message to the Roanoke County citizens in regards to school funding. Between our board and the school board, we have a revenue sharing formula. Since 2016, we have funded 28 million over and above that sharing formula. This year, our funds for the operating expense are over 95 million dollars. We pay all their debt except for one loan that they took out some 20 years ago. We provide 40 million toward capital every two out of three years for school construction. When I first started on the board, it was 10, 10, 10, and then we have gradually gone up. So we've gone from 20 million to 40 million. We allowed for three schools to proceed out of cycle to help support remodeling the closed classrooms, or closing those classrooms versus the open classrooms of two elementary schools, and we're allowing them to build a new CTE school, all totaled for 120 million, I think it goes up to 130 million. Today, school indebtedness is 69% of county debt, or 162 million dollars, as Mr. Mahoney tells us about. Our board supports schools, period. You know, I mention these financial arrangements because certain school board members don't think that's enough. Matter of fact, our revenue sharing formula is sought after by many counties in Virginia and our ACO members. Ms. Hooker is constantly getting calls and requests to share that formula. And so I just wanna bring that forward so the citizens will know that we fund our schools, we give them a lot in terms of funding of what they need. Couple of other items I wanna bring up, don't forget, Illuminites is coming on board, and it opens up November 22nd. Is that right? Thank you. 22nd and runs to January 2nd? No?
Fourth.
January 4th? Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. And I too wanna tell Rebecca Owens, we're gonna miss her. And Rebecca, I remember when I first came on the board in that first budget meeting, you know, I came out there with my eyes just glazing over because it was so much information, and we came out of that room up on the, on the fourth floor, you introduced yourself to me and said, "Look, if you got any questions on the financials, you know, let me help you out." No kidding. So it's been, it's been, it's been a great seven, eight years that I've been available to learn all that about you with comparing the public side and the private side of the bookkeeping that we both go through, but you will be missed. Thank you so much for everything you've done for us. So that's it, that's all I have, so we move to item N, adjournment, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.